I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna open public comment at 4:30 also. If anyone wants to come up, they can state their name. Name and address.
Hi, Janet Dow, Seventy-Five Fox Lane, Seabrook. So prior, probably three weeks ago, I contacted Meredith Nato in regards to having my child transferred out of Seabrook. I followed the steps that she gave me. I wrote her an email. She responded back. She had ten days. She responded back in two. We set up a meeting. We met July 31st at 1:30. And that was a Thursday. That next Tuesday, I took off to New York for Cookstown with my son.
What did you meet with her regarding?
Regarding the email I sent. So it pretty much was pretty much going over the email I sent. You know, why I thought it would be best to transfer him, why I wanted to transfer him.
For the new bill for SB 97.
SB 97, yes. So we met. She had been five days to respond to me. I did not hear from her on Wednesday. And I was not sure if Thursday was to be counted because we met at 1:30. And so I did receive an email back.
Well, she's not here. Maybe we should.
I had asked for a non-public. Um, I didn't get an answer from the board on that.
Well, I responded the other day 'cause I was having.
I think there might be some confidential information too, so we may wanna wait for her.
Yeah, yeah. And then the board can decide if they wanna go into non-public. It's not my decision to me.
Okay.
Um, it's the board's decision, so.
Okay.
Want to protect your privacy.
The, and, yeah, and the way that I looked at, I mean, the governor didn't even sign the bill till August 1st, so.
Exactly, but it does go back to July 1st.
To me, it sounds like it's going for the next year.
No, it does go back to July 1st of this year.
Yeah.
It has a deadline.
I have been in touch with state reps. Um, I've been in touch with the state reps on this. It's effective July 1st.
If it's effective July 1st, the deadline to send it is July 1st, isn't it?
Well, that, I believe, is the older version that you're seeing, that just the Senate signed, not the final version.
So that's confusing.
Um, and that is the one that is capped at 10,000 students to receive funding to go to other schools. This here allows a student to go from one district to another district. And I'm not even sure why Seabrook is considered a separate district if it's being ran by the superintendent. If it's a separate district, the superintendent shouldn't have say. It should just be run by the board. You can't have the board and the superintendent if we're a separate district.
We're not a separate district. We're S A U 21.
Okay, but I keep getting told that we're not S A U 21.
So I.
I, I think, well, I think if we're just gonna table this conversation, maybe that's the best plan.
Yeah, table it. Okay, we're gonna table it for right now though, 'cause we don't have the other person here who she's referencing.
Can I?
'Cause it's.
Yeah.
Right. Correct.
But it's public comment. You can't table public comments. So you, as a person of the public, you can't do that.
Who says? Stop it, really, Josh. We're gonna, we have it for 30 minutes. Meredith will be here shortly. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah. But then you said, see, to go into non-public. What if the board votes not to let you go into non-public? Then you lose your public comment, so I don't want that to happen.
Well, then I guess I go a little higher than state reps.
So can we kinda decipher that so that someone can go away?
Right, so I wanna wait for any more public comment. I wanna hold off until Meredith is here. And if we have to extend the public comment, we will do that.
Okay.
And we will answer Janet's questions.
Questions. Okay.
I have no problem with that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, we'll continue on. And then, uh, let's see, June 10th. Public hearing and regular meeting minutes, approval of minutes.
Yeah, approve of the minutes.
I didn't see it.
Oh, second. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, you can, and then I can say that.
Okay, yeah, I'll second Maria's motion.
There was a couple, um, a number three. I don't know if you corrected them since, oh, yeah, it looks like you did. Oh, no. So number three student report says, report on eighth grade tr- trick. Just trick. Trick, it's supposed to be. Just some spelling errors on their file.
Mine says tr- oh, yeah, tr- I see what you showed.
And number seven. Reports. I don't have my glasses on. Let's see. Um, after the semicolon, leadership.
M R.
A R.
E R, yeah. And then thanked at the end of that, I believe. E. Oh, number seven, E. At the very right side, it says update and then semicolon, then thanked. We used to say thanked. And then eight, V. Was portrait of a learner, so learner in there just needs to be corrected. This is the first line. Planned portrait of learner, update on wit and wisdom. That's all I found. So we have a first, we have a motion by Maria and a second by Lacey.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor with the changes?
So the motion is going to approve the minutes of June 10th.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah, it's a motion. Okay.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We did have a public comment for you, Meredith, but we wanted to wait till you got here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So again, Janet Dow, Seventy-Five Fox Lane. I've sent a motion over to Meredith, um, back in July to have my child transferred out of Seabrook. Um, she answered.
Sorry, Jan, but this would really be, to me, this would not be a public comment conversation.
All right, well, then can you explain the SB 97? Is that?
The updated version.
Yes, I have a.
Yeah, the final version.
Can you tell me why a parent can't talk in public comment anymore? What's going on? 'Cause this is a first.
Maria, this is, uh.
Tell us.
It's not a first.
It's not a first, but this is a conversation specific to her child and a request that could result in a hearing before the board, which should not be something the board is having a conversation about in public. With respect to SB 97, I've given you the exact information as it was approved.
I believe you guys received the updated version today.
There, there is no updated version that allows children to transfer from one district of residence, that would be Seabrook, to another district of residence, such as Hampton Falls or North Hampton.
Okay, so why are we different, why are we different districts if we're all ran by the same S A U?
Because you are.
If you're running Seabrook, we're part of the S A U 21.
You are, that's correct. But Seabrook is an independent school district, as are the other districts within S A U 21. That is different than some S A U. Some S A U's have cooperatives where they have one large budget and it administered with one central school board. That is not the way S A U 21 operates.
Well, then S A U 21 shouldn't be being ran by a superintendent. It should be being ran by our school board.
But the school board doesn't, we're not administration and we're not we're not educators. I don't have an education in, I don't have a bachelor's or a master's degree in education, so how can I?
But if, if we're not. Okay, well, there are two different versions, okay? We have the first version that went up by the Senate. Then we have the finalized version, okay? And I believe you people received it today. I spoke with the state rep. He will be here tonight.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's why I was just trying to get clarification, yeah.
Um, can, can we explain to Janet how she can, um, move forward with the school board against your decision that she made?
She has that, she has that information.
Okay, so then we'll.
It was, I was to contact the school board. I did contact the school board.
Okay.
I received an email that I saw Maria asked Michelle to put me on the agenda. Then I saw Michelle say, sorry, I was away on business. You know, blah, blah, blah. I'm just getting this. I'll, it will be up to the board tonight.
So the letter that I sent to Janet, in accordance with your policy, is that if a parent is appealing the decision, they need to send an appeal letter, field request through the superintendent to the board, and that the board will schedule a hearing. At this time, I did not receive that request, so I was unaware that she had reached out. But in order to hold a hearing, you will need to schedule and, um, be prepared to hold a hearing.
Right. And I'm, I apologize. Like I said, I was having email troubles too. I had talked to Rhonda and Meredith about my email troubles early last week, but I was off in Concord for the week, so. Um, I didn't have a chance to look at my emails.
Okay.
And so I didn't see your, it doesn't mean in the future that we can't have a meeting.
Okay, well, time is against me here. School is starting shortly. Time is against me.
Mm-hmm. Well, like I said, I looked up the SB 97 and it was just signed by the governor on August 1st. So how can it be a July 1st? I, I feel like this is a red chain.
It's effective back to July 1st.
Yeah, uh, the title of the bill, the analysis says the bill authorizes parents to transfer their children to other schools within their resident district, as long as such schools have the capacity to accommodate the student. Again, I, I appreciate that there's confusion about that for some folks, but it is not confusing to me or, or to the attorneys, um, to the guidance we've received from legal firms. It's very clear. You are a single school district. The only schools that you have are Seabrook Elementary and Seabrook Middle School. If you were Manchester and had multiple middle schools or multiple elementary schools, students could transfer from one of those schools to another of those schools.
Okay, well, we have had other children transferred out of Seabrook over to the other district.
Following the policy that you made your request under, which you are now going to appeal to the board. So the board can schedule a hearing at its convenience, whenever it is able to make that happen, so that you can have a decision prior to the start of school.
So what's up to the board to second this?
Well, I do know that I'm asking him to be transferred over to L A S. I know they have room for him.
I've looked into that. There is room for him. I can't do another year here. I can't. Honestly. It's not the type of school I want my child in.
Okay, so, well, so not going any further, 'cause this is what has happened in the past, is sometimes a chair would let people just speak, and that's why there's rules and regulations above the school board. We are not the, we are not the administration. We are overlooking policies and children and safety and different aspects like that.
Okay.
So that's why we're the, we're not supposed to hear any of the stuff, because ultimately, if you come to us, we need an unbiased decision.
I can make myself available before school starts to, to just meet with Janet.
Yeah, I can, yeah. I can certainly do that. I have no problem with that. I'm just saying that a lot of times, this last minute stuff that's coming in, not that it's your fault or my fault, whatever, it's part of life. It's life. Not everybody is on their own every second of the day. I'm sorry, I work.
Well, it isn't part of life, but I have five board members sitting in front of me, and not one of them, other than Maria, asked for you to put me on the agenda, and not one of them responded back to me.
Um, I leave it up to the chair to respond to all the emails, unless they're directly brought to me.
Right, and that's why I apologize, because I didn't get to it.
And I answer to the public as an elected official, not the chair, so that's the way I said to him.
Well, you have the time, 'cause you don't work. I don't have the time, so I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't work. Michelle, I do work. I'm sorry.
I mean, I have the time, but I'm sorry, I was.
So can we set a time for a meeting?
I go to work, Michelle.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah.
I think next up, Janet, you have to send a letter requesting the appeal.
We need a date.
Right, she can, can she just email it?
Right.
She can email it to me and the chair or the full board.
We need a date.
Okay.
And then we will.
Yeah.
Well, if you've already denied me, why do I have to include you?
That's the way the policy is written, Janet. I didn't write the policy.
Can't we forward the email to her then? I didn't, I didn't know you weren't on it. I didn't even notice, so.
I think the request needs to be for an appeal, not just to, to have, sit down and talk, have a formal appeal.
Right.
Isn't it for an appeal?
It would be for an appeal because.
I'm appealing her decision because she denied him.
And so the board will need to conduct the hearing. It will likely be represented by council. That's a decision the board would need to make, so they are gonna need to consult to, to set a date with you, but I'm sure they can find a time to do that prior to the start of school.
I hope so, because he will not stop school. He will not enter this bill on.
This email was clear that she wanted to appeal the decision. I don't know if everybody read it or not, but it didn't go to Meredith. I can forward it over to you right now if you want.
All right.
The parent needs to forward it. Let Janet, so she can wait for her time.
I will, I will send you a copy of Meredith's denial. I will ask for an appeal.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if we should get.
I'm a, then I'm, I'm a, then I'm appealing it and ask for a meeting with you guys.
And we will make ourselves available.
And I will see see Meredith in it.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. All right.
Thank you, Janet.
I'm gonna sit and wait for the state rep.
Okay.
Maybe he can clarify the bill.
Yeah, we have it on the agenda too, so. That would be great. All right, so we, Denise, we approve the minutes of June 10th?
Correct.
Where was it? Okay, so S A U report superintendent, student services and curriculum.
I'm happy to go first, Dr. Nato, if that's okay. I just wanted to start by letting you know that we did have another successful E S Y Extended School Year program here at Seabrook for our students who have identified special education needs. It's a little reminder in there about what E S Y is. The I U P team decides annually when they sit down with the student and they determine if a student with disabilities is in danger of significant regression over the summer months. And if that's the case, that they may lose critical skills if they don't have an opportunity to have some additional time in summer, then the team may recommend, um, with the parent's consent, that they come to an E S Y program. So that happened. I'm not sure that, um, Ms. Allison has a report this month, but she has reported and shared with me that it was a very successful, um, opportunity in July for our students to come. They came Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday mornings and, um, had great opportunities here with our staff. Uh, several of the S A U Special Service Directors and myself attended the annual, um, conference in Meredith last week with the New Hampshire Association of Special Education Administrators. It was again a very worthwhile experience for us. We reviewed, um, some of the new legal rulings, um, as well as dove deeper into neuroscience behind human behavior, talked about productive teamwork, um, and had opportunities to, you know, review, um, more, uh, compliance issues around special education. So, um, we will share that with our staff members, um, as we return to school this fall. And then finally, good news. I, um, came into the plea, um, last spring. You'll remember that our year three renewal was up with Cook Center. We wanted to continue to provide no-cost behavioral and mental health resources for our families who may be on waiting lists or who don't have access to having a coach or a mental health clinician that they could get in contact with. And the Cook Center has been marvelous for the last two years. And so Cook Center heated our, uh, pleas and they were able to give us a sort of, um, cost analysis by joining with S A U 90. And so that allowed us to, uh, to renew at a lower cost. And then the principals, through some grant funds, were able to, uh, support. So S A U 21 will once again, um, be sharing all of the information about the Cook Center and parentguidance.org. In the agenda in my report, there is a hyperlink at the bottom, the little medallion that says Parent Guidance goes right to the website. And, uh, parents can get all kinds of free information, as well as sign up for no-cost parent coaching. Gives them access to a dedicated coach, um, once a week for 30 minutes. And by, and they also have, um, access by text or by email 24/7. So, um, we would like to spread the word about this, make sure that all our families know that this is available to them, um, not only in Seabrook but across the S A U. And we're just really grateful, so I wanted to say thank you to Cook Center and spread the word about, uh, this great resource. That's it for me for August. Welcome back.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right, we'll move on to S E S Principals Report.
All right. So it's been a, been a busy summer. Um, we're excited to welcome a few new staff members. Especially our preschool teacher, who we've been searching for for quite a while, so that's, that's an exciting one. Um, we're looking forward to having Annalise Dunn here more often this year, um, which will fill, certainly fill a void in, in helping us with a number of, of things. And Sarah Costello, who is the Speech and Language Assistant, will be joining us. And then Nicole Welch will be joining us as an educational assistant as well, so we're looking forward to having them join us this year. Um, I wanted to just thank our facilities team for everything that they've done this summer. If you've ever been in the building over the summer, you, I'm sure you know it's a very, very hot, sticky place, but it, um, is really coming together and they're working extremely hard, so thank you to Peter, Kevin, Doris, Cubby, Sean, Costa, Cassie, uh, Bruce, Diane, Siobhan, Ron. Thank you all. And then I'll echo what Mary said, summer school and E S Y was a success. So thank you, Christian, for putting that on and, and running that show, and for Lauren DeConcent for running our Title I program. Definitely went well and gave Colleen West and I an opportunity to, to work on quite a few other things during those days, um, to get ready for the school year. And so, one big thing to note, we sent class placement letters home at the end of July with a lot of other paperwork. I'll get to a few of those other pieces in a moment. Um, but if you did not receive one of those letters, please call the school and then we can mail that out to you or at least give you that information so that you know who your child has for a teacher. Or you can join us on, um, August 21st for the ice cream social. And all of our staff will be there and our E A's will be there out on the front lawn space, uh, from 1:30 to 2:30. And just another opportunity for parents and students to meet their teachers before the school year starts. And speaking of which, so our first day of school is the 26th, but I wanted to just make a point to note, we usually get one or two preschool or kindergarteners that might show up on that first day, so their first day is September 2nd, one week after our start for grades one through four. And then I just had put in there some of the other forms that went home. Um, included the residency affidavit form that went home to all families, not just people were not just selected for that. That was every family, um, I believe, across the S A U. As well as the returning registration and power school is really important, that we have updated information going into the year for everybody. Um, and that also includes the transportation form, so we know how everyone's getting home every day. It might change a little bit for some kiddos, so we wanna make sure we have all that information to start the school year. Um, then last, to submit all of that, you can drop it off at, either you can mail it back to the school, you can scan it and email it to myself or to D Abram at our admin assistant. But you can also drop it off at our office Dropbox, which is right out in the front of the school at the main entrance. Um, and other things that, that you want the school main office to receive can go in there as well throughout the year. So that's really it, but we're excited for another good year.
Awesome.
Can we flip back to a few things for the superintendent's report since we skipped over?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Did I skip over you? Sorry.
That's okay.
Somebody keep me in check.
Can I, um, I wanted to follow up with a question if I could with Tim.
Sure.
Um, has there been any shuffling around of, like, do you have the teachers all set in place for the grades? Did you move any? Is everybody where they were when we left off in June?
As of today, yeah, there's been very little movement for staff.
Okay. You're outside.
Might have been an officer too, but it was, yeah, very minimal.
Okay. Good. All right, thank you.
All right.
Nice.
'Cause it's on the same line as the.
Oh, okay.
We group it together, sorry.
No worries.
One of us usually gets left off.
Sorry, Meredith.
So the story of the summer, um, for me at the S A U and to some extent all of our administrators has really been about some of the policy and law changes that were enacted over the last year. Um, we had a very lengthy policy committee meeting two weeks ago, I guess now. Um, and you'll see some of those in, uh, tonight's agenda for immediate adoption, some for a first read, and you'll see the rest as we move forward over the next couple of months. Um, but that has also had implications for our student handbooks, um, which, uh, we chose to have our handbooks reviewed by legal because there have been so many changes that we wanna make sure we're compliant with, um, what's incorporated into those handbooks. And one of the changes that we'll be talking about later is the cell phone law. So I wanna share with you a video that we'll be sharing with family. Um, this is a statewide law, so we're gonna share this video and people happy to answer questions after.
A new granite state law requires a bell-to-bell cell phone ban in New Hampshire's public schools. This short video will share what this new law means in our schools and in our classrooms. Research shows that these devices are contributing to negative effects for our young people. Teenagers in a 2023 study received a median of 273 notifications per day on their smartphones. Nearly a quarter come in during school hours. One in five students in the study, 20%, received more than 500 notifications per day. Dr. Jonathan Hyde, a social psychologist, author of The Anxious Generation, and a leading researcher on the subject, says, quote, "The one place where we can truly safeguard our children's developing minds is schools." "New Hampshire has an opportunity to give their kids a real-life childhood," unquote. A national survey of teachers revealed 83% support a full-day ban. And the new law has broad-based support from learning communities throughout New Hampshire. What does a bell-to-bell ban mean? It prohibits student use on all personal communication devices, not just cell phones, from when the first bell rings to start instructional time until the dismissal bell rings to end the academic school day. Each school district is required to have their own locally adopted policy developed with their parents and teachers and review it each year. It's best to check with your local school district about whether phones must be powered off, placed in a backpack or locker, or in a pocket or other holder in the classroom. Each school will also develop their own age-appropriate response to enforce this policy. We know students and families can have strong opinions about access to cell phones in school. Many of these concerns center around safety and access to communications during an emergency. Be sure to review your school's safety procedures for how you may contact your child and when and how they will be able to contact you in the event of an emergency. You may also have concerns about medically necessary devices or devices required in an I E P or 504 plan. The law provides specific exemptions for these devices, which your local superintendent or their department will determine. If you have any questions about the new bell-to-bell ban, it's always best to start locally. Reach out to a member of your school's administrative team. And together, we can help create a more productive and positive learning environment for our students.
Um, again, this is a, a significant change for some. We have a draft policy for you to review, but it has implications, obviously, for administrators and what happens in schools on a day-to-day basis. Um, the other thing that we have been working on this summer, um, queen, staff in our office, primarily Rhonda and I, we spent over 200 hours, um, on write-to-no requests, largely for the Seabrook school this. we spent over 200 hours on write-to-know requests largely for the Seabrook School District. So, that's kind of the story of our summer. Beyond that, we're doing all the things we normally need to do to get ready for the start of the new school year with hiring and onboarding new staff. We're excited to welcome them next week and to get the school year kicked off the following week.
So, on the cellphones, what are we doing from there? Do we need a policy?
Policy is in your agenda. I'm sure you've all got a chance to look it up.
Yeah, there are certain...
I didn't see the laws of the medical piece in there, but maybe I missed it.
It's in there.
It is in there, so if they have a medical exam, that's different.
Yeah, I expect there to be, those to be few in number, but it's possible.
Yeah. All right.
So, before we close, public comment, do we want the state rep to clarify SB 97? Because it's very confusing.
Yes.
I'm not.
So, the chapter final version that was signed by the governor.
Excuse me, can you say who you are?
Sure, absolutely, thank you. So, I'm Matt Suborn-Dichwan here, I'm one of the state reps for Seabrook, Matt Suborn Drive. Okay, so, the new law, SB 97, accounts for inter as well as intra-district transfers. So, that means within a school district, like at SAU 21, we are our own district.
No, Seabrook is its own district, Hampton Falls is its own district, North Hampton is its own district. They're all individual districts within SAU 21.
Yes, ma'am. For the goals of school transfers within a district, those are the responsibilities of the superintendent. If there is another superintendent besides you, ma'am, that school, that students at Seabrook could go to or any other in SAU 21, let me know. But superintendent's responsibilities are for overseeing transfers within a district or without.
Correct.
So, if there is no other superintendent for students at Seabrook Middle School to go to, then therefore, we are in your district.
Yes.
Okay. As written, the parent guardian of a student may apply to the superintendent of the student's district of residence to change a student's school or assignment to another specific public school, public academy, or an approved private school within the district.
Of residence.
Yes. The parent or guardian of the student may also apply to the superintendent of the student's district of residence. The parent or guardian believes it would be in the best interest of the student to change a student's school or assignment to another public school, public academy, or an approved private school which is outside the district.
Correct.
Unless the student is experiencing a manifest educational hardship, applications pursuant to this paragraph shall be made no later than July 1st for the upcoming school year. So, when we visit the SAU 21 website, all the schools that are listed, that's the district. A district is led by a superintendent.
It's not. Districts are led by superintendents and so are SAUs. And sometimes those are one and the same and sometimes they're not.
Copy. Prior to... If such a request is made to reassign a student to another public high school, public academy, approved private school within the school district, the superintendent shall approve the request unless it fails to meet the requirements under this section. So, within a district, the only requirements for consideration are capacity.
Correct.
Okay. And determining whether it is in the best interest of the student to change the student's school or assignment to a school outside the district, the superintendent shall consider the student's academic, physical, personal, or social needs.
That's correct.
So, that's when it's outside the district, if we're going to, let's say, outside of SAU 21, or if you want to go to...
Outside of Seabrook. Seabrook is the district of residence. Seabrook has its own established budget, it has its own established school board. Seabrook is a district.
So, I disagree.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't think that... Yeah.
The School Board Association agrees with my position, as do the leading educational law firms in the state. I appreciate the contradiction and I'm not trying to pick a fight in groups. I'm interpreting it as I read it and as I have confirmed with those other entities.
I did look up through the Department of Education prior to this meeting, just knowing this was on the agenda, which was updated this month, this year. And if you go to their website and look, it very clearly defines the school districts on one side and the SAUs on the other. So, example, Seabrook is School District 485. North Hampton is District 405. Southampton is School District 495. But then, if you look at like, Guineas Swamp Regional, there's five schools, but they're all School District 582. So, or if you look at Timberlane Regional, they have Danville Elementary School, they have Pollard Elementary School, but they are both under the same school district, District 534. So, even though those are two different towns, that is considered one school district because that is how they are applied through the Department of Education. SAU is a regional SAU, but if you look, SAU, the administrative body that oversees the operations of one or more school districts, they are responsible for administration and financial oversight, working with the State Department of Education, ensuring educational quality. School district, these are entities that directly manage the school within their geographic area. Each district has its own school board, which all those towns do, makes decisions about things like their own school budget, which each town does, and hiring of teachers and facilities and transportation, which we do.
Okay, thank you.
And I've heard all about you, but I still, I have to say first of all to you, I think that any law or any bill or anything is always up for, is there a loophole? Is there something we can do differently?
Yes.
And one legal opinion may say, we can't, and the other one may say we can. And the parents always at the end have the right to challenge for their kids, that's what they're here for. And we have one superintendent. So, and I just, this is confusing and it's tough, but I am not a one-all. I'm not listening to one opinion, this opinion, you know what, I'm listening to the parent and then we'll take it from there. The parents want their kids not to come here, which is very sad. And I think the piece that we miss is why? Why don't parents want their kids coming here anymore? What can we do to change that, to make that better? Instead, we're always fighting against the parents, saying, no, you don't have that. And then hardship come in, I don't know if it's there anymore or not, but we used to have that. And that was difficult, for parents to have to prove hardship or, you know, their kids getting bullied for the last two years. They've been publicly speaking about it, yet the superintendent may say, you can't, you can't switch schools. But does that always make it right? Maybe not. And maybe there needs to be appeals and people need to ask questions.
But if it's, and then new...
So, the board still has its best interest determination policy, which was the other piece of what cited in the law. If the superintendent does not support a parent's request, that can be appealed to the school board.
Right.
And if it's not supported by the school board, it can be appealed to the State Board of Education. So, those pieces have not changed.
There are avenues to go through.
There is. Maybe we shouldn't interrupt anymore and let him speak, because it is public comment.
I'm saying that for myself.
No, no, it's fine, it's a good conversation and, you know, again, Casey, thanks for bringing up the definitions of what a district is. You know, I read the law one way, when I read, you know, I'm looking at SB 97 as written, I'm interpreting a district as being led by a superintendent. So, with that being said, the spirit of the law is freedom, choice. If students do have that, we would hope that, you guys do adopt that spirit.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment before I close it?
Yes, I want to say one more thing. I am going to submit my appeal to you people. But I want you to know, if you sitting there as a board are there for our children, you will do the right thing by this. Because him being in this school is not the right thing, you know.
So, Janet, I almost... Janet, I don't want you to be in a place where the board has information and is gonna have to recuse itself. I think you want to wait until the board addresses me.
Was it a month or two ago you were here telling us all about the bullying in public with other parents? Thank you.
To the point of trying to put us off battery charges against children, against 13-year-olds, against the ones I came to the board for that didn't belong in this school.
All right, yeah, we need to, we do understand. And we will have a meeting with you and we'll figure out a date. And I'll let you know once you send the information to Meredith and myself or the whole school board that you want to appeal it. And then, I will contact Mr. Kassasa or whomever the board decides because...
I just don't understand why you want to hang on to him. I don't understand. He don't want to be here, I don't want him here. I don't know why you want to hang on to him.
All right, we're gonna close public comment at 5:10? No, 5:09. And did you have anything else, Meredith, on your report?
No, not at this point.
Okay. All right, let's see if I can find...
Can I, yeah, can I go back? Can I go back to Tim too, because instead of going down to...
Yeah.
Program, the NEED program, I just wanted to know the amount of kids that are registered thus far for that program.
So, you have that on the agenda later.
Yeah, but I'm gonna ask him now, Meredith, under reports, and you can discuss it further under the agenda if you'd like.
So, we have six spaces available for students.
Seven.
Seven, cool, seven, cool.
You have six more available?
No, I was mistaken in saying, they're all full, but I said six. They're on number seven, but it's full.
Okay, and just a quick question while we're speaking about this, the Cubbies that were built back in the spring, does those have doors on them or anything that closes the kids from being able to come in or out?
Nope.
They're just a kind of a three-wall?
It's a cubicle.
Okay, I wanted to make sure on that, thank you.
Moving on to SMS Principals Monthly Report.
Hello, I hope you all had a great summer, enjoying the weather.
Yes, so far, so good. July was great.
A lot of what I'm gonna say is what Tim said. You had a great summer at school, I want to thank Lauren DeConcent. As always, she did a fabulous job in overseeing and running that. We didn't have as many students as we liked, but we did have a C this year, which beat last year, so thank you for that. So, students worked on ALA and math, we used some sample intervention kits that we were provided with free of charge, so we were able to kind of do some work with that, that was great. As Tim said, thank you to Peter and his staff, the building looks fabulous. As you can tell when you walk in the main hallway, it's a lot of work to take everything out of a room and clean it up, so we appreciate that. We also have three new staff members joining us, we're looking forward to meeting them. We have two case managers and a Spanish teacher, so that'll be, I can't believe it's next week, but they'll be coming on board, so welcome to them. We have a new AD, Savannah Sigmund, so we're excited about that as well. She'll be posting information in the guy's sports. We're waiting for a couple of schools to get back to us about scheduling. So, that'll be up and ready before you know it. We're going to the Brown Center on PD, sorry, no popsicles in the middle school this year. We are doing some professional development, our staff, team building, collaboration, because they're gonna be coming in the school year and working with our students and advisory. So, what better way to get to know the students, by getting to know the staff, so we're excited about that partnership. That will be happening on one of the PD days. There's a very lengthy section of, please fill out all this information, similar to what, I love Tim's idea, wants a little Dropbox. We're gonna purchase one and think we can drop things off. Unfortunately, we only had 92 families last year, I think you've probably read that, it might let up to parents. It's real important, especially if an emergency arises and you need to get in contact with somebody or that person is no longer a contact, which has happened. So, anyway, parents can help us that, we would truly appreciate it. And you're gonna get an email about the PTO, they'd like some help stuffing some backpacks, so we just got that from them. They got a generous donation and they kind of need hands-on to kind of help with the backpacks. And that's it for...
That's it for now. Do they have a date on that, the backpacks?
Yeah, when you were gonna ask me that, in my head, I was like, when is that?
Wednesday?
Thanks.
Yeah, from...
Oh, it's tomorrow.
3:00 to 6:00 at the Rexon. Let me go check.
You have that?
I could go 5:30 sense.
Wednesday, August 13th, 3:00 to 6:00 at the Rexon.
Come on down.
Tomorrow, August 13th, volunteer and let's stuff some backpacks.
Or also during that time, parents that need backpacks or school supplies, come get them. They will be there at the Rexon.
It's a great deal.
Yeah, and maybe any parents that do come that need help, because, I mean, I'm sure most parents have computers, but some that don't with the Power School and logging on, is there a different way that they can, is there a paper that they can do, fill out? Or how does that?
It really works best if they do it online, but if they're having any issue or they need a device, they can do that here at the school, if they want to call the school. Either admin assistant, Lexi or Dee will sit down with them and help them, walk them through the process.
All right, that's good to hear.
Yeah, last year, we had an open house, we had Kyle send somebody some out with it.
Yeah, perfect. I think that sounds great. All right, anybody other questions yet?
So, I know there's some things that are down here, because I didn't know if they'd be in your report. The new schedule that came out, the draft schedule, is that in place now, permanent? And is that, was that a good agreement with the staff, you and everybody that put together?
It's also on the agenda.
Yeah, I know, but it wasn't anything, and I'm the one that asked for it to be on, so I guess I'm asking the question.
Yeah, that's fine, I thought we were gonna talk about it when we got to the agenda. It's in place.
Okay, and everything's good with it. The other thing is, I know also I asked to put on Learning Pathway Center. And then, with the schedule, you also, I read it on Facebook, so that's why I'm asking you about it. We have two grades now that are going to have upwards to 16 kids for pre-algebra 7th and 8th grade. That's, is that new this year?
No, they've always had it.
With that amount of kids, so it's nothing new that we've done to try to kind of bump up the...
David did pre-algebra for a couple of years.
Okay.
Did it last year, they did it for me.
Okay.
So...
I just was excited and thought it was something new that we were doing to try to improve, so it's already been happening.
It's happened in previous years. Students in 7th grade, for that will go into 8th grade.
Okay, all right.
All right, anybody other, any other questions? All right, moving on to Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Report.
I can do that, Lauren's not here, it'll take me two seconds.
Sure.
So, and I'm very happy to do it because my son is featured in the report.
Can you just state names of the...
Shay Casely, SAU...
Some of the board members don't know you.
Hi, Shay Casely, SAU Curriculum Director. I work very closely with your administrative team here and Lauren DeConcent. So, Lauren ran a great Title I program, I want to thank her publicly for that. I know the principals have already done so, but she did a great job organizing that. The ESY fit in hand in glove with that program. And one of the highlights was my son, who is from Manchester. He works for VAE Systems as an electrical engineer, and he loves volunteering in public schools. And he came here and built rockets for the kids, and they shot them off. And he said he's never gone into a public school where kids have made rockets in 20 minutes after his presentation, and they've gone so high that they've lost sight of the rockets. It was a first. He had a blast, the kids had a blast, and we're looking for ways to continue our partnership with him and VAE.
I love that.
To keep the kids' excitement and step moving forward. So, we're in the brainstorming processes, but looking forward to that.
That sounds great.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, moving on to Finance Report.
Yes, so we're only a little over a month into your fiscal year, no major surprises or information at this point to share, the report is included.
Can you, Meredith, I had sent our email and asked Matt, and then when I got the email back, I sent it to Nancy.
I brought the invoices to review in the non-public.
Huh?
I brought the invoices so the board could review.
Yeah, I don't, I want, don't want non-public, I just wanted to know the amount total that we spent illegal from March until today, that's all. Or yesterday, or whatever it was.
Okay, well, I can try to total that for you, I just have the invoices.
That's not private information.
No, the total's not, but the way you had asked for it, some of it was going to be, so I brought the invoices.
Do you have the total?
I just said I could total that for you while the meeting goes on.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions on the expenditure report for August? Okay, continuing business, JSI Sea Coast Youth Services.
Yep, so this is your, this would be the opportunity to accept the grant from JSI, this is Megan Corrier, who serves as the Substance Abuse Counselor, the Assistant Assistance Counselor at Seabrook Middle School.
Alright, do you need a motion?
Based on the board's.
Policy?
Prior motion, yes, you need a motion.
Alright, need a motion to accept the JSI Sea Coast Youth Services contract?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Casey, any second?
I'll discuss.
Yep, seconded by Lacy, now you can have a discussion.
Yeah, what did you, you, you still have some watch, I love it. Do you have information, cuz you said the prior board, what did the prior board do? You said prior board decision, didn't we, didn't we accept that?
Made a policy that the board has to accept all grants.
Yeah, oh, okay, I thought you were saying that we didn't accept that one, so that one went through last year, right?
Yes.
Same one.
For fourteen years now, I think.
Okay.
Yep. But we just needed to approve it.
Yeah.
Alright, so I have a motion by Casey, seconded by Lacy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that unanimous?
And Jen?
Yes. Thank you.
Alright, moving on to Consolidated Application Titles and Grants.
So, as I shared with the board, the federal government did release Title One, Two, and Four Funds. The first twenty percent of that is available for us to draw down, those are the IDA funds, so we've included for you the applications that exist today, included the consolidated grant application, so that we can apply for those, with the board's blessing.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six federal entitlement grants. Second.
Second, motion by Lacy, seconded by Casey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Thank you.
Is there any that all pertains to that, so, early learning playgroup?
Is the IDA included in that, or is that a separate?
It was included in that.
Okay, can I just ask a quick question, so I didn't realize, I thought we were open on the one piece, sorry, those three or four.
Okay.
There's an agreement or a request in here for Seabrook School to, I don't know if it's called partnership or provide, can you explain what that means about the Title One Sacred Heart's requesting from Seabrook School?
Yeah, I can, I can explain that.
Somebody.
It's required.
Okay, thank you.
That's called equitable services and is a federal requirement. If we have private schools within our district, or, or, I'm sorry, within the SAU, that kids in our district attend, so we have Seabrook students who attend Sacred Heart, we have to give them an equitable piece of our Title One grant, so they can run a Title One program to service Seabrook kids at Sacred Heart. And the way we do that is we do a proportionality, we figure out how much we're spending per student here and then we give them per student that they have there. So, so it's, it's been the same way the last year, I think because we received a little bit more funds this year, they have another thousand or two thousand dollars for equitable services this year as well, because proportionally it goes up.
Yeah, and I asked that, cuz we voted, the town of Seabrook voted not to support the Warren article that gave them some money to help the kids out of their.
That, that was out of your town budget?
Yeah.
This is out of a federal grant?
Right, I realized, but still, I want the people in the public to know, we're still supporting that, just in a different way.
Sure. Right, we would not be eligible for Title One money if we didn't do that, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to Early Learning Playgroup. This was, we need a motion to put that back into the school year? Or?
Yeah, I, I think we talked about this in June and I had mentioned it because it was brought to my attention by a few parents that wanted to see it back, that did it previously, before we stopped it, that enjoyed it and then asked for it to come back and had positive things to say. I was, I thought we were going to have some sort of retreat to talk about it and maybe talk to Mary about how that would look, so I don't feel comfortable doing a motion now, but I would like to, and I honestly forgot about it, cuz I should've reached out to Mary and be like, how would, how would it look like? Because we had some issues, the past board, last year's board, we had some issues and so we stopped the program. And so, just to make sure that those issues are cleared up, so that we can move forward, so if. That's kinda, I was hoping to kinda discuss that during our retreat or something to, to see how that would look in, in the school, how that would be handled. Maybe I can send an email with all you guys on it to Mary to, to see like, these, these were our issues last year because I was a part of that on the board. And, you know, people wanted to come back, but how is it, how would that look, you know, things like that?
Maybe I could suggest if one of you, maybe you Lacy would be willing to form a small work group with a couple of staff here, and Tim and myself, and maybe we sit and kinda come up with sort of a draft plan that we could bring back to the board, so the board knows what the plan might look like for that to return.
I, I. I would be like that.
The playgroup continued, as I've shared with you, it just was meeting at the town library, which brought about some other challenges for families, but yeah, we've, I'd be happy to do that if you're interested.
Yeah, I don't mind being a part of that at all.
Okay. Tim and I will put our heads together and try to get something on the calendar and then we'll, we'll try to put something together we can take back to the board.
And then if you guys have any concerns that I'm not aware of from last year or any, anything, if you wanna just let me know and that way I can try to iron them out with them as well.
I don't have really many concerns, I, I.
Well, well, Maria and Jen, cuz we're all on the board and we, it was, a lot was discussed in and on public, so I can't discuss it here, so.
Great.
Yeah, I know.
But if you guys have any concerns or whatever, that way I can address it while we do the workshop
Okay.
And to make sure that those concerns are being fixed.
Not, not repeated, that's the biggest thing, cuz we got a good group of staff, we're gonna keep it that way.
Would it be. Burn sound for who to also do it with, Lacy?
The one with Mary?
So, just, I went to the playgroup, so I was actually there, it's all happening.
Yes. Yes, right.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful if you don't mind, thank you.
Alright, and we'll coordinate that.
So I think too, with Casey's comment, just so you know, it wasn't anything about me or you having a kid in the playgroup, it was things that happened that were personal that we couldn't discuss.
I don't know, but just like the process. Right, right, I just meant more like the process, what it looks like, you know, what, what kind of activities happen.
Process, the guidelines, yeah.
Haven't stopped, right, continue, it just continued elsewhere.
At the library, correct, for last school year, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep. Policies first read, these thirty policies were reviewed by the Joint Board Policy Committee and meetings held on January twenty-seventh and July twenty-ninth, both meetings were attended by board representative Michelle Knowles. All the policies categorized as priority required are listed below. So these are federal policies that we need to adopt tonight, or is this the first, it says first read?
These are first reads, these are all required by law policies that affect your management of federal funds, school safety, your chemical safety plan, use of the defibrillator, and there are a number of topics in here, but we, we don't feel that they need to be adopted immediately, the law always supersedes policy anyway, but these we feel can wait till the next meeting for adoption.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Who is the main policy representative from the school board, is it Michelle or Lacy? I thought it was Lacy girl.
Last year it was me.
It was me. Yeah.
So, okay, so.
And where she's.
I mean, if these are mandated, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Can we just come, can we just approve them?
Joint Board Chair.
I'm not sure if they're mandated, or do we have to?
Well, we can move them forward for a second read, if, if anybody has any questions on any specific ones, I believe they were highlighted, I think it's just maybe language change and some additions.
So I read through these, the adoption of them, I don't have any questions on. I just have the question for the, the school board powers and duties for withdrawal, and I read the note on there from the New Hampshire School Board Association. Could you elaborate a little bit on why, cuz I wasn't at the meeting?
Sorry.
No, that's okay, I'll give you a minute.
The next reading, so we'll be like.
Well, um.
Which policy?
It's BBA slash R, the school board power, it's under withdrawal, it's the first one. Um, cuz they said.
School board powers and duties, Lacy?
Yeah.
The procedural.
Yes, so, cuz it says they are easily accessible now.
Correct, so the school board powers and duties is hyperlinked in your policy BBA, BBBA dash R just listed them.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
It was just a list of the powers and duties, it's not actually a policy.
Alright, so it's redundant and it's, okay, alright.
Correct, so now in the policy itself is the hyperlink to the state or the N three oh sixes that lists out.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, that was the only question that I had.
I forgot one, that I was gonna ask. So we go.
Alright, anybody have any other questions? Okay, so do I need, I need a motion for?
Not for first read, we'll just bring them back to the next meeting.
I mean. Yeah, that's what I meant. Alright, so we'll bring those back, and then policies first read and adoption, withdrawal. Motion to waive SSB policy BGAA and approve the adoption and withdrawal as recommended by the five policies presented.
Yes, so these policies, two of them were enacted into law and have to be included in student handbooks this year, actually tomorrow. Well, right, so if the board adopts these tonight, they will be incorporated into the handbook, assuming you also approve those tonight, they will be incorporated. The first is the Parental Bill of Rights, there's really nothing new in that beyond other things that are already required in law, however, it's sort of consolidated into one spot and will be included in handbooks that way. The cell phone and other devices, that does include smartwatches and other personal computers, et cetera, that we talked about earlier, JLCK, physical and emotional well-being of students, some changes to definitions that were folded into the law, and then the Student Reckons and Access Your FERPA Law, sorry, FERPA policy, which reflects some legal pieces as well. And I think that, I think FERPA was on hold, I think you had seen it as a first read and did adopt it, but we need it adopted also to appear in the handbook.
And then the withdrawal for the equity?
Yeah, so I sent board members a note about that outlining the piece. As of right now, the state legislature approved a bill banning diversity, equity, and inclusion. So in policy and contracting, because the specific title of your policy is equity, I think until we get some clarification about what the law intends, it makes sense to either suspend that until the next meeting or to consider withdrawing it. The policy itself, like the contents of the policy, I don't believe.
It's similar to the law, where.
Correct, I don't believe the, the contents of the policy itself would be in violation of the law with the exception of the wording of number seven, and we would recommend you take out number seven. But I think the title of the policy on its face is an issue, so.
Yep.
For right now, I would just recommend suspending it for conversation at the next meeting.
Okay, so I will, unless anybody has any questions, I'll make a motion. No? Okay. Motion to waive SSB policy BGAA and approve the adoption and suspension as recommended for the five policies presented. One second.
Motion by Lacy, seconded by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you.
Now moving on to Fiscal Year 2025 Audit Questionnaire.
So Matt, fortunately he is not here to read this to you, so I will, my intent would not be to read it to you, but as part of our auditing process, the auditors send a questionnaire to each board and individual board members have received pieces as well. Based on last year's responses to these questions, the responses to this have been pre-populated, but if the board has questions about or wants to change anything that's pre-populated, this would be an opportunity to do that. There's also a description of your background and use of service in the board that's incorporated, so if we'd like us to make any changes to that, we would do that. We're also affirming as part of this process that our investment and fund balance policies remain current and that we don't have any recommended changes to those, so if the board is in agreement as it's written, then we will, you'll be voting to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
I just noticed it says chair under the rating.
Yes, because during the term of the fiscal year, you had two different chairs, yep.
What was that? I couldn't hear you, Casey.
It says that your chair and Michelle's chair, so I just wasn't sure why, like if it needs some.
That's correct, because from.
Probably cuz it slipped.
June to March, remember it was the chair and then from March to.
Cuz that's how I was asking if that was.
Okay, I have no problem with it. Anybody have any changes that they wanna make to it? Hearing none, seeing none? Like to move that forward? To give the school board chair the right to sign.
On behalf of the board.
On behalf of the board.
So I'll make that motion?
Alright, motion by Lacy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Now on to the handbook. SMS Handbook Updates, SMS Parents' Chapter Handbook.
First, I love how you've highlighted the changes, cuz that was so helpful.
Thank you, Josh.
Josh is the man. I have to thank him for the enormous amount of time when I was on Block Island that he was editing and changing. And last minute, last week, as all the laws were being passed, and I was at the block office, so thank you to him for his unbelievable questions on it, I mean, we did kinda summarize like.
The only question I had was answered with the cell phone thing, cuz I know we were using, last year we had the garages.
Parking lots.
Yes, the parking lots, so that was the only question, but it was cleared with the presentation.
Locker.
In your locker.
Yeah.
Not responsible for it.
Or don't bring it.
Um, would that be a perfect world if they could do that?
Yes, Maria, it would.
I didn't have something to.
I would just add to that, I mean, there are a lot of communities that are using this as an opportunity to kinda get the message out to parents, to encourage them to wait until eighth grade to provide their children with cell phones, developmentally, children or adolescents are more ready for that responsibility than young for children.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
So, you know, if you're a parent who's, who's good with younger children, who think they need it to come into middle school, the answer is they really don't, and they're not gonna be able to use it all day long. And I appreciate that families have different circumstances. You know, some of us grew up before cell phones were available to us in schools or at our workplaces, so if parents need to reach their children, they can call the school office, leave a message. If it's an emergency, they will pull the child down to the office to provide them with that information, and non-emergencies, they're gonna make sure the children receive the message prior to the end of the day. And if children have an emergency, they can go to the office to use the phone. We have phones in every single one of our classrooms that can dial out. But again, that's not gonna be happening during instruction, but with approval of their administrator and or teacher, they'll be able to, to use that phone in special circumstances, so. We will be okay, kids will be okay. They listed, you know, the average kid gets two hundred and seventy-three messages. um over the course of the school day. Um, I would venture to say and and our administrators might echo this, but um we see that for some of those children, those messages are coming from their parents um throughout the day. And so um it will be a shift. I expect that, you know, the first four to six weeks are gonna require a lot of re-education around where devices need to be. Um, it's likely gonna start with sort of a a warning.
Yes.
Please put your phone away Denise. The second time, the teacher's gonna say you can pick it up for me at the end of the class period. The third time, it's probably gonna wind up in the hands of sadly for him, Josh, um or 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 Principal Lennon. Um, and then after that, I think we'll be asking parents to come and pick them up. So um it really is a a family, community conversation about managing um those devices and and learning to uh be productive without them. Um, I personally have stopped wearing my smartwatch. Um, you know, while I'm not regularly getting mess regularly getting messages throughout the day, I do I look at it, right? And so I've said I'm gonna have to break out, Mary and I talked about this yesterday, I'm just gonna break out my old fashioned, you know, time.
A watch watch.
So, um, I'll know what time it is.
Just tell time.
Um, but I, it's a, it's a change for all of us, but um I think it will be um better for our children in the long run and I think they will be healthier, um less anxious, um and happier without constant access to these devices. And um this was before you were representative, but a couple of years ago, I suggested to our representatives that this was the bill that should be passed. I know our, the teachers unions across the state supported this. There's, there are really compelling reasons to do this. If parents are anxious or if you have some of those, um, you know, specific medical need or concern, they can reach out to the administrators. Um, you know, we're happy to talk through um those concerns with parents, but we can do this.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. I think part of this too, and this is, you know, reading and listening and hearing to people and talking to them. It's not, I think the cell phone is a cell phone. That's an issue for not only children, but it's adults as well. Whether it's in the building or at the grocery store or there's a lot of interruption. So my thing is about it is that I think we need to do better in trying to find a way with communication, whether it's a forum. Where's the transparency? How do you feel about it? If we can get the trust from the parents, I think that's a lot of what's going on in this community right now. The people just, they've lost their their trust, their hope, everything. So how can we as a board maybe talk about it during the retreat? How can we help build that backup so they know your kids are safe here? Your kids absolutely, this is, this is a great school. How can we build that up and bring that camaraderie all together as a community? And I think that for me, the cell phone issue is a cell phone issue, right? Everybody has their own opinion. But I think the fact that how we grow as a community to um learn, you know, when my parents sent me to school, they didn't worry that we weren't safe. They didn't have that worry anymore. And I think the more we can do.
My mom never even get up with me.
She didn't even get up with you.
No.
It's more generational thing.
So I just think if we can just work on that piece of it as well, it might be a little more easier to kind of sink this in.
I I think that's, well, again, it's state law, so it's not a state only issue, but I I do appreciate that point. I think
That's what our goal is.
Yeah.
I think people have lost their way in communication. Instead of reaching out to the person directly, people are using social media or other ways to
Text or, yeah.
to put the information sort of out into the ether, but not addressing the issues face to face. So I think that will behoove all of us to
Yeah.
to make an effort to have the conversations. Um, I I would also say that, you know, we didn't grow up, most of us, in um a time when school shootings were publicized on television every day. So that particular safety concern um is is generational as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, a a lot of measures are in place to protect children. We had a parent safety night that was not um well attended.
No, it was only about ten people and most of us was alone members.
Um, you know, we
It was sad.
You know, we will continue to make those efforts um to invite people in and welcome them in. Um, and it, you know, those those relationships happen one conversation at a time. So we're, we're here.
It's. Yeah, and I think we will too. I think collaborate by the board. We need to have some more positivity and
Mm-hmm.
um communication and just.
I think that's so funny, cause my parents did not want to hear from me when I was a kid. Like they were not texting me nothing. If I told my dad's work, like I was in trouble.
Yeah.
I can even live out.
Maybe it just blows my mind the amount of people that wanna talk to their kids all day.
Yeah, and I think that that conversation, Michelle, that you just said, um the respect and the kind of learning as a board, how we're gonna work together. Like earlier, the personal attack about working. I don't bring work into here. I don't care what Jen does, if she works or not. And to say those things sends out to the community, wow, those are our two boards on this up there. It's something, when work.
It's the same, it's the same when you tell me what to do on email.
Yep, and I, and I'll address so telling you what to do. So as a board, and I, and I'm gonna say this right out, we had a request come in. Um, knowing as a chair of the board, um back in the day.
I did share, yeah.
No, last year. So I, I knew what we had to do. So I said, gee, maybe, you know, should we reach out
Yeah. Okay.
to the attorney just in case they're needed this evening. I'm not trying to like say do this. I'm trying to say this is what we did and and safety net so that we can have that communication if that would have happened this evening.
And I get that, but sometimes you can't rush things either.
That's all. No.
Sometimes you have to go through the protocol and stuff. I'm not gonna call um a lawyer a day before our meeting and say, oh, you gotta get here, like.
Yeah, don't talk about specific. You mean just in general, you wanna be the.
Yeah, just in general. Like I like to, I don't like to, like I set the agenda with everybody like two weeks ago. And then two days before or whatever over the weeks, I mean, it was hard because I was.
Yeah, but do we need? We want to continue with the handbook.
Yeah, sure.
Do we what?
We're gonna continue with the handbook. Did you have any other questions?
Yeah, that was part of it.
Good job.
Um, Casey.
Are we good with the handbook?
Yeah.
You like that one?
Yeah, and I have questions for that too.
Yes.
Thank you. For the handbook?
Yeah. Can you, um, so the cell phone thing we've dealt with, um, the new, cause it looks new to me with the attendance. I don't see like ten half days. I don't see excused absences versus is it still? Um, if you have a doctor's note, you're not in school for a week, um, you're still excused or is that ten days? And then the thing that was new.
What paying is that? What paying is that?
I, it was the absent part of it. Maybe Josh knows.
There's no change to the policy or the law.
And. And we have.
We, we do have a policy. We, we, we don't change that.
Yeah. But it says chins on it. And I don't, I, was chins a previous?
But we know it's fine.
Cause chins is a big deal. If you're missing half days, whether you're excused or not, and you're missing five in chins. And I'm only asking because back in the day, there were some big issues when that was an automatic referral.
That would not be an automatic with us.
Okay, so I think there needs to be a little more um information in there.
We would. That's fine. We would sit down with parents and have a conversation.
Cause it looks as though after those ten days, you're You're going to chins and that's costly not only to the district, but to the parents as well. So I don't know exactly what part I'm trying to put it, some of the attendants of the changes that were highlighted.
It just says that it may be filed if your student is eventually absent.
Can you read the whole, how, the whole sentence?
Yes, it says truant student is one who has accrued ten or more half days of unexcused absences. In response to truancy, a meeting with the family will be set up with administration to discuss the student's absences and develop a plan for that, for the student. Following that meeting, if the absences continue, a child in need of services, which is chins, petition may be filed by the school if your student is eventually absent. I don't think that is an automatic. That is a worst case scenario.
And so Mary, can you trust in my administration?
Yeah, that is.
I have definitely said excused or unexcused. So usually it would say unexcused, um.
Well, it says unexcused.
It does say unexcused.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
So the student who just, you know, we had a couple of students who just didn't wanna come to school, right? So.
Yeah.
We have a process we go through.
Yeah.
And to kind of echo what Lacy said, that would be a last case scenario that we wanna get to that. We've had parents who actually asked us to do that because they can't get their child.
Yeah. You've had chins put on like recent?
We've had, I'm not gonna discuss.
Well, I, I mean, as a board member, you should know that stuff and I don't know, so that's why I asked.
We've had.
You wouldn't, you're not, you're not.
No, you would not.
No. You wouldn't be privy to.
About the chins, we wouldn't be privy to what we're doing in our building in non-public if situations arise?
No. You're not a need to know. It's protected under FERPA. That's student confidential information. You, you're not in a position to be provided with that information.
Well. So just like bullying and all that other stuff that doesn't get reported to us, we hear it outside. That's student private information, but unfortunately you're hearing. So the chins question was what I had and would like it or not, I asked it. So for clarification.
Oh, that's fine. It's a lot of.
Thank you. That's who we're here for, right?
It's, it's.
I could be a goodie and say, oh, yes, that's perfect and not even look, but I'm sorry, it's not.
Marie, I think you're, Marie, I think you're mischaracterizing my response to you by the comments.
I'm not talking to you. I've been saying in general that I didn't understand that and I just wanted clarification.
We just talked about respect. We just talked about respect. Let's, respect for everybody.
Yeah, and clarification. I'm here for students, Michelle, and parents. That's the difference.
So on, I, I didn't.
Isn't that we shared on.
Good.
I didn't join to get berated like I get berated.
Is that clear?
I just asked the question.
Maria, is that, is that?
Yeah.
Explanation clear with that? Okay.
Yes. Hard way to get there, but yes.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'm gonna make a motion if you guys, if you have more questions.
Yeah.
You good?
Um, PTO meeting, they're at six.
You have a?
Say that again? PTO meeting, they're at six.
Did I put five thirty? Okay. Six, we'll change that.
Perfect.
PTO six, Josh, here we go. That's one little edit.
In case the one people.
Oh, we want people to come.
Yeah, please go.
Please go.
Um, so with that.
Anything else?
Nothing else? Okay. With that amendment, um I'll motion, um I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six um SMS student handbook.
Second.
Thank you.
Alright, motion by Lacy, seconded by Casey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? And moving on to SES.
So I'd also like to thank Colleen West for her work on our handbook this summer. A lot of hours goes into that and and just spent a lot of time making sure it was thorough and and also thank you to Meredith and her team for going through the handbook as well. Haven't seen it reviewed this this closely since I've been here, but it's a good thing and I think it's something that I will keep a parking lot for myself throughout the year. And if there's anything that the board also feels that way, rather than scrambling in the summer to try to remember all the things that we want to have in there, um I'll keep a page in the back of my binder here and we can um hopefully feel like we're working on that collaboratively throughout the year.
That's good.
For next year. But this is what we have for now for the upcoming year and I'm happy to make any changes if necessary, but um, or answer any questions if there's any questions about anything.
No. No. Does anybody else have any questions before, cause I'm gonna make a motion.
Nope.
Nope. Um. Nope, sorry. Uh, we just talked about cell phones. Uh. I have two that never stop, Ryan. Uh.
Can I have your cellphone, please?
Yes. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the SES twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student and parent guardian handbook. One second.
Motion by Lacy, seconded by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? National Assessment of Educational Progress.
Yeah, so that was just included as informational, but from time to time or almost every year, uh at least one of our schools is selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress. So we're just notifying you that fourth and eighth grade have been selected for participation in both math and reading. Um, and that eighth grade has also been um selected to participate in civics and US history tests this year. We, we don't get results for that. They're not provided at a school level, so we won't have any information on that.
We've never tested, but that's not a standard, um.
It's not our assessment, it's the national.
Oh, but the national, so I looked into the the national report card, it's called, yeah. But I've never known to to be tested in like a social studies.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Not frequently, but occasionally. Um, we're more, most schools are more frequently selected for math and reading, but they do do science and social studies assessments less frequently because it's costly.
Yep. Well, it's a good thing we have like the best eighth grade team ever.
They'll be so happy.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any questions on that?
No.
All right, school board retreat. When would we like to do the school board retreat? And I know that we'd still, do we wanna do the school board retreat first and discuss our goals, cause goals haven't been discussed? For reassessment, city board.
We should, we should definitely um do our goals and I would, I would almost like to schedule it after we meet, uh Casey and I meet with um the team for that, just so that we can discuss it with the board to finalize anything. Just in case there's something, like I'd like it sooner than later, but at the same time, I don't want it, I wanna discuss it with the board prior to.
What are you?
For, I'm sorry, I'm like talking like different. I'm like thinking faster than I'm talking.
Are you? I am.
Um, for the, the early into the, thank you, like thank you.
Early learning.
The playroom?
I don't know what, my brain just like scrambled up. I was talking.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah. Um, yeah. But I'm available. I can make it work.
So are you trying to do this before your September ninth meeting or after? I guess is the question I would have posed.
And when with the staff? When are we gonna do that?
Well, I think we should discuss that at the school board retreat, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Okay.
So that we have our goals set and then meet with them and
Okay, I just, I know.
We could reiterate our goals to them and they can reiterate their goals to us and so that we can all work together.
And that's key. And what I was hoping though, and this is just me, I would have liked to have heard from the staff
Yeah.
and maybe some parent, uh, community input and then sit down, cause our goals pretty much have been kind of set in stale for a while. And I think with the new board that it would be, personally would love to hear some of the input from the staff. I don't know if it's a survey or how that would work, but so we can sit down and kind of have some starting points that seem to be really important to everybody. And that we can.
And I wouldn't mind having, I don't know how that works, like having input from parents. Like what do parents want their school to be like?
What's not good on? So typically, boards would bring forward a draft and then this is your forum to get input from parents and staff.
Correct.
And you can send that out to those communities separately or send that, you know, send out a separate notice of, hey, here are our draft goals. We're gonna be talking them at the next meeting. We welcome your feedback and input.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and they could submit a to a writing or come in person.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, that's the easiest way to do it.
All right, so we just need to figure out when, cause we also may need to schedule something, another one before school.
Do we have a, do we have anything? I mean, looking at the agenda, it looks like we cleaned up a lot for the ninth. I mean.
September ninth?
This small. Um, agenda.
I don't know going forward, what I, I have to look at my agenda notes, but um. Can we do it like a kind of. Is it, it's probably best to do it separate.
Yeah. Could we do like a, if we need a meeting, if we don't need the meeting, if you don't have a lot of requests or anything? And then just use it as a board retreat night? I mean, we, it's an open meeting anyways, even if it's a board retreat. Um, we've been over the old saw and people come and
Mm-hmm.
sit in with us and listen. So I don't know how you wanna do it.
But it's nice. Um. I think the policies that will be coming for a second read, um that's, that's a big one for your September meeting. Um, but if I was to say from that, I don't have a.
And I have.
We wanna meet with the parent, with the parent before school starts, so we keep that in mind as well.
Yeah.
Right, that's, yeah. Well, why don't we, um well, we make sure she gets it, once she gets the email and then maybe start attentive, um with the parent first and then go from there.
Okay.
What do you mean?
Right, for our non-public.
Sorry, were you trying to schedule the retreat before the start of school as well? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily.
Have to, you know, we don't have to, but we, we should, we definitely need to
Yeah.
um do the non-public appeal before school.
Lacy, did, I, can you, I can't remember if, did we do a, I know you had dropped it up, the parent survey and the staff survey, but we never did that, did we?
No, we never put it out.
Okay, good, but we have something to start with. That's what I was just thinking, if I know.
I don't really remember. I'm gonna go Google.
I know. But yeah, I think, you know, let's get the hair and whatever it is we're gonna need um set and then just see how everybody feels about the next day.
All right, so why don't we, um, we'll come back to that maybe and finish what we're doing so that
Right.
we get through our agenda and then we can, people can think about. we get through our agenda and then we can, people can think about what dates or times, I have, I mean, I have my schedule here, but I know it can be difficult.
Yeah.
Time goes by too quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. So we'll move on for now, we'll just hold off on that and we'll move on to, while we kind of already discussed S B ninety-seven, I don't know if we need more clar- I don't know who we.
I mean, with Lacy's, um, description, with the districts and
Right, that makes more sense to me.
the way I'm reading it is that Seabrook School is a district versus the confusion of S A U being a district. And the way that she explains it and the way that it's written, cause I, I rewrote it, um, I, I don't have any more questions about it.
I think we crossed that bridge when we get there at this point, I mean, if we don't have any.
I know, who knows if there'll be another amendment?
I don't think it really pertains because we're not this large district that has this many schools that we can switch kids to and, to and from.
I, that's a tough one.
Right, like Manchester or.
Right, so I don't think it really pertains to us as far as in district because we just have one school in the district that that child could go to.
Right. And we could always ask when we meet with the attorney.
And they, well, we can just do what we've always done where they, they request it with the superintendent, she approves or denies, or she denies, it comes to us, cause we've done this in the past and then we hear the appeal.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Alright, we'll move on to N E C C Learning Pathway Center.
I'm good with the, I, cause I, someone else requested.
What is that? Oh.
We, but, um, My Pathway Center, I would like a little bit, um, more information, is it something new this year or is this something we did last year?
We did get approval from the Department of Education in the spring, um, we've had this planned for a while. As you know, we opened the NEC program in the elementary school servicing kids with significant needs in the, uh, on the autism spectrum.
Yeah.
And those kids are getting older, and we have kids that are moving into middle school and so we knew that we needed to have
Mm-hmm.
uh, another program and so the D O E did approve that program and we're ready to go, so.
So the Learning Pathway Center is not something that we're gonna be doing to kind of try to help with the behavior issues and the issues academic, it's something that's going to carry on.
It's specific to students with disabilities.
From the other program.
Yes.
Specific to students with autism.
But, but managed in-house.
And there was no cost to that Learning Pathway Center, it's all going.
In-house. We had the position in the budget.
Okay.
Huh?
We had the position in the budget.
Okay.
Perfect. Alright, moving on to, this is Hugh Maria, I believe you, did she answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, ratification of nominations.
So we'll typically go into public in case the board has any questions about.
Yeah. The next Seabrook School Board meeting, um, for the regular board meeting will be Tuesday, September ninth at four-thirty. And then I think that's it, we'll, we'll call into non-public session under R S A ninety-one dash A colon three, two.
I'll make a motion for roll call to enter non-public session under R S A ninety-one eight three, two, B N E F, six oh one P M.
Second.
Second? Alright, motion by Lacy, seconded by Maria, all those in.
No, no.
Oh, roll call me, sorry.
Um, Jen?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.